I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please make the same in Mr. Wilson.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight. Together, together to make decisions about this town, we ask that you be with us, that your will be done in this town of Sheridan, that you, your will be done in each and every single one of us. Guide us with peace and with strength. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Oh, may the order live.
Silas Devaney.
Here.
David King-Kate.
Here.
Daniel Brad.
Here.
Eric Denver.
Here.
Divya Chawla.
Here.
Ronald Stone.
Here.
Michael Foot.
Here.
We have minutes for the October 21st meeting. Everybody have a chance to review those. Any questions, corrections?
I do. I do, President. It shows Councilman Foot is voting aye for the town council desk. I believe that is incorrect. That is the only correction.
Need to make a note to change the minutes. No.
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from October 2021st with the exception of the correction requested by Councilor Foot.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. We'll start off with a brief special presentation. The Main Street Group.
Hello, Council. I'm Heidi Keenholz. I am the Promotions Chair of the Sheridan Main Street Inc. Group, and we just have a couple of updates that we want to update the Council on tonight. So I'm very happy to announce that we're going to wait for the, is it waiting? Is it thinking?
It's almost there.
All right. Well, we're almost there, guys. All right. So I'm happy to announce tonight that we are a a group that has 12 directors on our board, as well as 22 affiliates. And we meet on the first Thursday of every single month. You can go to the next one. At 4:00 PM at the Sheridan Historical Society, we are currently still looking for people. If you want to join us, that is when we are meeting. And we do a lot of things which we're going to hear about later on tonight. But I want to remind everybody about our vision statement. So the Sheridan Main Street Inc. vision statement is strengthening Sheridan's legacy for the citizens of our community that will allow everyone to prosper. We also have a mission statement, and the purpose of Sheridan Main Street Inc. is to enhance the downtown's historic identity and to cultivate a center of activity that reflects Sheridan. We wish to meet the desires and needs of citizens of the citizens of Sheridan. This is done through the concentrated efforts of design, economic development, promotions, and organization. And I want to talk about really quickly, we can go, here's a list of all our current directors, as well as our affiliates. So if anybody is interested in being a part of Sheridan Main Street Inc., there's multiple levels of activity and involvement. Our affiliates, for instance, don't need to come to every single meeting. They do not get a vote, but they can actively contribute to the conversation, as well as they can be just a part of one specific avenue if they, if like, if they want to be involved in one specific project that we're doing. But our directors are, all have votes, and part of our directors are, if you want to go to the next one. Each, each of our pillars are headed by a director. So again, our Main Street pillars are design, economic development, promotion, and organization. So a lot of the things that you've been seeing on Main Street, we filter everything through those two lenses. And so if it doesn't fit, I'm sorry, four lenses. So if it doesn't fit within those lenses, then that's not Sheridan, what we're focused on in Sheridan Main Street Inc. However, the very two most, not yet, the two most important, we also do two events. We do two events on Main Street that we're very proud about, and one happened last week for the Halloween on Main Street, the trunk or treat. We had a lot of fun, handed out a lot of candy. I'm sure most of you, a lot of you are out there too, so that was a lot of fun. And then next month, we are going to be doing our Christmas tree lighting. This is a really great opportunity to experience what Sheridan is all about, historic Main Street with a really good historic old town charm where we light the Christmas tree, we sing songs, there's a little bit of trivia involved. This year, there's going to be involvement from the school with singers there, as well as there's going to be treats, hot beverages, a couple of vendors offering food. And so that's going to be December 6th, starting at 5:00 PM. So we chose a Saturday as not to run up against any other activity going on in town. So I hope everybody can make this year's tree lighting. It's going to be again, December 6th, and it's going to be out in front of the library where we have our beautiful tree. And we're going to be talking about a little bit more, you'll be seeing in the next few weeks, decorations going up on Chris, on Main Street for Christmas. So we're all looking forward to that. And then now I'm going to turn it over to Julia.
Even though I get nothing, I was not prepared for this. I just came off vacation and here we go. Monon meets Maine. It is a task force of roughly 22, we emailed 22 people and roughly eight to 12 people show up at our meetings. Once a month, we gather, and we're just focusing on how to build structures, water, you know, getting water and utilities like for all of the cyclists and the traffic that will be coming on the Monon. If you don't already know, that we do have quite a bit of traffic on the Monon right now, but our focus is to make, make the Monon a the way for business, you know, you know, down for Main Street. I just know that I am not a cyclist at all, and being a part with Jared Keever has basically the lead on this. I knew nothing about trail towns or trails besides walking on the trail, and I think this is going to be an exciting this, this task force is going to be an exciting part of our Main Street. And it's, I think it's very vital. And if anybody wants to join that part, that would be great as well, besides joining the Main Street. This, this meets, we don't meet on a regular basis, like as far as a time, but if you are interested, you can get in contact with me or Jared Keever, and we will add you to the email list because we are absolutely looking for hands and anybody that's excited about the Monon, whether it be, you know, we're, we've met with master gardeners today, thinking about structures as far as like shelters, getting water fountains and things like that. So if you have any ideas on what you want to see on the Monon Trail, please reach out to us.
And I, and I will add that Monon Trail just was recently finished. We just had our last groundbreaking, so we go all the way now to County Line Road, which is an additional half mile. So if you start on Main Street and you head out west and then back again, that's an additional three miles that you'll be walking, biking, running, whatever. So we really feel that, I know, I know Mr. Bertrand talked about at the ribbon cutting. We're one of two towns that have direct access from our main streets to the Monon Trail. So we really would want to capture that. We want to capture the traffic. We want to capture the visitors and view it as a regional draw. And so we really have a lot of opportunity at the Monon Meets Maine to, with that, with that subcommittee group that's formed to really make not only the Monon Trail shine for the users of it, but also Main Street and what all the Main Street has to offer for all the users of the trail too. So we want to make sure that when people use the Monon and get to go all the way up to the end of the line of the County Line Road, that they know what Sheridan is all about and what we have to offer. And Julia and Jared are doing an excellent job creating that framework to really shine Sheridan in its best light. So next, we're going to have Cindy Keever, President of Sheridan Main Street Inc. to talk about the other fun things that we're doing.
First of all, Christmas of, they really undersold it. Thank you, these. Christmas on Maine started, and we wanted to really amp it up. And every year, we amp it up. And this year, we have another great investment coming on that our board has been able to do. And you can help with it. I'm going to pass these out. There's a QR code that takes you right to donating. If you donate to Christmas on Maine, you're going to help with, we are investing another $20,000 this year on top of what's out there. That means we're going to, you're going to see some other decor that we're not going to, snowflakes, we're going to see snowflakes. So I brought those for anyone in the audience. I do want to introduce Garrett Gossard, who's with us. I do want to introduce Garrett Gossard, who's with us. He's the treasurer of our, of our group, and we needed him desperately because we are starting to have some money. I'm going to run through what we, how we feel we partner with the town. And the idea behind this quick presentation, and I'll be quick, is because I know when I talked with Councilman Devaney, and then I talked with RDC Chair Daniel Brad, and then I talked with Mr. Bertrand, I, I get the sense that you guys are busy. And so you don't have a lot of time to always make the connections. So we're just going to give, we asked to come tonight and give a quick connection of those. Sheridan Main Street is a 501(c)(3). We are missioned, our core mission is, and we are in Indiana accredited in Main Street. That gives us some opportunity for grant monies. We are, as a main mission, how do we take our historic buildings that are on the National Register? And how do we find the sweet spot between maintaining that preservation and having attractive storefronts to attract business? Because we are an economic driver. That's what we do. You guys are so busy that we try to take some of them off the plate, and we work really well with the town leadership. Here's what happened, and we started, this goes, this is about 14 months' worth of work. An RDC grant, I'm not going to do a lot of numbers tonight, just know that we had a private grant that was very successful. That means if you were an owner, you could put some money in, you could get a match, and that just started a lot of buildings that were just sitting there not getting any love. Just no attention, no love. That private grant was done well. The RDC and the town discussed it, and we had an RDC grant. And that RDC grant has put out, you'll see some numbers in a bit, but what is important? Working, we work tightly with Indiana Landmarks, the Center for Historic Preservation. They said, get your roost and tuck point down. The buildings have to stand. No one's going to rent a building that fell down. It's that simple. Here's what we've gotten done in about 18 months. There are 11 new roofs. There are 14 tuck points. There are 11 enhanced storefronts out there. So on the next slide, Todd, as I just given some thoughts, you can just slowly go through this. It's just for the audience and for the councilmen. These are our before and afters. And our before and afters, we set out to say, protect historic elements, the brickwork, the ironwork, but make a storefront so attractive someone wants to upgrade behind there. And we start to build the traffic. And these are the, the before and afters. For Sheridan Main Street, it was us. Make us look alive. Make us look clean. Make us look like you want to be on our Main Street. These are the 11 enhanced storefronts we have so far. And you, and you'll recognize the addresses. You'll recognize that some of them are totally changed storefronts, some of them are enhanced storefronts. That's what we do. That's why we're happy to do that. You'll see the brickwork. Hold on that one for a sec, Mr. Bertrand. That, that brickwork on the left, unfortunately, after the owner brought that, everything fell in. The roof, the brick, everything. But because we have this process with the Center for Historic Preservation, which I'll mention in a moment, we have a whole, we have a whole library of reference exhibits. They are a picture of how the buildings should look and could look. Because we had that, we went to that owner and said, we'd like you to put the brick design back. We can't, we can't help but that it fell in. That's going to happen. But you can see, they did a beautiful job of replicating what the original design was. So we can go into the next group. Here's down on the trail. This building is at some point going to be a shop. But right now, what we're concerned about, you look down the lower left-hand corner, I'm sorry, back just real quick. You can see that the arches were, were preserved, but the storefront is now a walk-up window, which of course, we're going to need on a trail. So we can just go through those really quickly. Some of it is just getting the open fronts on the bank, on the bank building, getting those glass back. That bank building had granite steps reinstalled, not concrete, but granite, because that was the preservation part of it. And then I think there, there are other projects out there. We're wanting, this was a building owner, it said they were going to make that look better, but let's make it prepped for a mural as we go into looking for the murals. This had nothing to do with Main Street, but this is the important befores and afters. If you haven't driven around town for a while, you need to drive around town. And then this was our first reveal. This building started out with a reference exhibit from the Center for Historic Preservation. We started talking about what it could be. This owner, I don't think you can really tell from this on the right, wanted to really lean into luxury prison glass as an historic element, and then the design came from there. So that building is now a professional office with intentions of perhaps being a retail outlet at some point. So then, what, what, so what happened? Since the start of the RCGC money, there were, there was $228,752 spent by someone giving us a grant. Owners out of pocket show $299,267. We know this. That's documented, over a half million dollars. What we're doing this month at the, at the board, there's a whole lot of more money on Main Street. For instance, my husband owns, our family owns the bank building that you saw. And there was a project where there was a $10,000 badge for it, but, and it should look like he only put in 12, but put in 60. That's true with lots of businesses, and we're collecting that. So the next thing is that when you, this was our goal as a director, how do we know? And how do we get this energy going? Because now it's all about, somebody needs to be behind a storefront selling something. So we can all walk in and get it. That's the key. That's it. That's economic development. So if you are driving around now, and you see the banner that is there, what you know is that, that building received a Sheridan facade improvement grant for storefront enhancement. Now, we're proud of our roofs, and we're proud of the tuck point, but we got to get storefronts. So that's where we're pivoting, and that their update is already underway. 301 South Maine is underway. 305 South Maine begins November 10th. We're going to, Mr. Bertrand's going to show the slide. Oh, let me do this first before he shows you that. In 2025, we were recognized at the state level in a couple of different ways. First Lady Marine Brown, she's very involved in Main Street. She was very involved in the Jaskety Street. She came here to celebrate when we became an Indiana accredited in Main Street. That's a big deal to us because it opened doors we did not have opened before. That was in April. We were asked on the right, there's every year a preserving historic places conference. It's given by Indiana Landmarks. And it is to highlight models that are getting some things done. And we were asked to come to highlight the Sheridan model. And we, it was Heidi was there, Jennifer Miller was there with us. It was a chance for us to talk with others. We, our session was well attended, well received. And it talked about this, the model that started, when the town council said, how can Sheridan Main Street work with us on some things that we may not have the time to attend to? And how can we do that with high quality and sophistication? That became a contract with Ball State University, a Center for Historic Preservation. And that became a three-year study of all of our historic buildings where we have the history captured, we have the zombie captured, and we have, this was key to our model, and this is what everyone wanted to know about in Port Wayne. It was phased in, so someone with not very much money could at least take one step, and now we can start the building. So the next thing is our 2026 key strategy. Yes, I always do that. Sorry. Old school teachers. Yeah, thank you, Councilman. 2026 key strategy is to develop streetscape to enhance the ongoing facade development. We're working hand in hand with the, with your planning department, Jennifer Miller. And I, that is a sketch of the alleyway between the fire department and the 502 South Maine Bank Building. That is the idea to be the connector alley, because the trailhead is right on one end of that. And that's when Julie was talking about Monon Meets Maine, is working to drive trial traffic right through that alley, land on Main Street, and come back to Main Street. That's the idea. Land on Main Street, come back to Main Street. So the next slide will show you the elements of this grant. We are to, we're working on it. We'll know something, we, we submit it in November to see if it's accepted. It's been, thank you, Jennifer, a lot of work. We had to do a lot of preservation work and show what was going, but what you see there are elements that could be in that alleyway. And it works this way. You start a crowdfunding with your community. We raised 50,000, and then we get 50,000 from the IHCD. The Housing Authority, and we had to have the plan and the strategy, and that's captured. The next thing is questions and answers. I wanted to talk fast. I know we have a busy agenda, but we wanted to catch you up just with pieces that are tying together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Main Street Group?
Yep, we appreciate the time.
Lot of hard work. We really appreciate it. Things are looking up and keep going, and hopefully more volunteers will step up.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are zero items for the consent agenda. Am I correct? So moving on to old business, is there any old business that we need to cover? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolution 2025-23 declaring playground equipment as a surplus. As you can see, the playground equipment has been removed.
This was been
Pretty cut and dry. Go ahead.
Pretty cut and dry. It's essentially just declaring it as a surplus equipment that has no, I can't, it can be disposed of. Pretty straightforward.
I have the resolution here. It references Exhibit A, but there is no Exhibit A.
They're supposed to be in the surplus.
Okay. Just letting you know that. So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution number 2025-23 declaring the old playground equipment as surplus.
Thank you.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Resolution 2025-24 Declaration Resolution KGLG Real Estate Real Property Tax Abatement.
This is in response to an application submitted by KGLG to real estate two. They submitted a statement of benefit, a property or monetary tax abatement to grant and tax payment. You need to go through the process of establishing an economically revitalization area. So that, this resolution walks through those steps. It declares the property shown, they can get it paid, and Heidi has a ERA. It sets the date for a hearing on December 2nd of a hearing, which will require 10-day notice, which we will take care of. And it makes in following findings in Section 8, that the council finds the estimated, the estimate of the project's assessed value. Project improvement is reasonable, the region is estimated to be full-time employment jobs can be reasonably expected to return or to result from the proposed project, salaries and other benefits information which has been presented to the council or to the system recently expected to result from the proposed project. And the totality of the benefits is sufficient to justify the granting of a 10-year property, real property tax agreement to the applicant. It also sets a 10-year tax abatement schedule as shown in Section 10. I believe Mr. Bertrand also provided you with a timetable and checklist that he's filed. So again, that's the date for that public hearing is in December 2nd.
Counselors, I'll reflect, oh, I'll refresh your recollection. This is Mr. Jim Kent, if you recall from several meetings ago, requesting tax abatement on two projects, and the real estate just recently changed to different owners. So that's, that's what this is. It goes back, I think, probably to August, maybe.
It does. At the, at the time they requested the tax abatement, they actually did not own the property, and that public thought it wasn't
So we need to adopt a resolution, then we'll have the public hearing.
Correct. This is the declaratory resolution. It will be a peremptory resolution.
Any questions on this? This will be the third or fourth one we've done out there.
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution number 2025-24. That's presented.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. So two meetings, public hearing, and then another meeting, or do we plan on suspending the rules? I'm just, I didn't know getting close to the end of the year if it mattered. Resolution 2025-25 Appointing Replacement Member to RDC. We currently have a member that resigned from RDC doing to a time crunch, not available to attend meetings. This individual was a council appointment. So obviously, it needs to be a council reappointment.
We've spoken to Dan Lyons. Dan owns Patent Automotive here in town. He has agreed to sit on this commission. So with that, I will make a motion. We accept resolution. make a motion. We accept resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty five to appoint Dan Lyons to the RDC.
Have a motion second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Welcome, Dan. I don't think Dan is here tonight. But thank you. Did not know that.
Yeah, he did that at the economic development Jewish meeting. Right. He's gonna have to sign some things to replace him right away and start thinking about.
Okay. Would that be more of like a January thing then?
Yeah. All these, all these particular questions will be at Henry. Mr. Lyon will finish out this year.
Encroachment permit application, Center Point Energy. Oops, sorry. Yes, it did. All right, we'll do resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty, twenty six transfer of funds. This is for the remodel. Because we're doing it a little quicker than. It's a longer walk from back there.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This transfer of funds is being requested now because the remodel of the community center is moving a little quicker than anticipated. There are some lead projects that need to be ordered, chairs, the desk, some of the other things that require either a partial payment or a payment prior to the end of the year. And in the budget, we contemplated that we would be moving money from the utility accounts in twenty twenty six. What we're recommending is that we transfer the first hundred thousand dollars now to cover anticipated costs between now and the end of the year. That would be fifty from water, fifty from sewer. And then at the end of the year, later this month or early next month, when we do the year-end additional appropriations that need to be done, we'll actually appropriate those dollars to be spent. Then in twenty twenty six, we'll reduce the anticipated transfer that we were going to make by the hundred thousand dollars we're making now. So we're not changing anything other than the timing of the use of the funds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Higgins? You're up, Eric.
I make a motion. We accept resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty six. Transferring of the funds, fifty thousand from water and fifty thousand from the sewer utility fund to the general.
I second that.
Have a motion second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass.
Thank you.
Now we can do the encroachment permit application for Center Point Energy. Anybody from Center Point want to, Mr. Kirby's coming up first?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Little background, Center Point, and I believe Miller is here to talk to the council. Just as a little background, a week ago, this past Friday, I received a citizen complaint about some traffic problems down on Ninth Street. I went to investigate and I found out that Miller had, Miller Pipeline was doing some work on Ninth Street. So we discussed, I did not recall issuing a encroachment permit. So through the discussion, we found out that there, they had were cutting on Ninth Street and did not obtain an encroachment permit. So I asked them to stop that work so we could meet on Monday. Mr. Gifford and I had a very good meeting with both Representatives and Miller. And Center Point were there on, on Monday and I would describe it as, as a productive, good meeting. So I think we had some miscommunications about when this was all part and parcel part of the State Road forty seven project. I think there was a misinterpretation that we do not require encroachment permits on State Road forty seven. Not necessarily for the project. I think there was some misunderstanding, so they thought that they were, since they were operating on the forty seven project, they didn't need to obtain town permits. So we, we worked through that issue. There were several streets that had been blocked off for short, short stretches of time. I talked to several of the council members about some concerns that they have had from a project that happened a couple of years ago. So again, what happened a couple of years ago, the operating without an encroachment permit. I asked both Center Point and Miller to please come to the council meeting since they, they were reapplying for another encroachment permit to continue their project. So I will turn it over to, to them to talk to the council about their request for this encroachment permit. Do you guys want to come up?
Good evening. I'm Mo Collado, Center Point Energy. I get Miller Pipeline, our contractor with us here. So just to, just to give you guys a brief, you know, conclusion of what happened. We had end up meetings during the planning phase for the end up forty seven project. You know, we had staff there from a G discussing the project and the relocation that we're doing. We were, you know, we asked during these meetings, which the city was kind of part of it, what permits needed for the project. And at that time, we were under the impression that the notice of receipt that we have in the work plan covers both the end up and the city to do the relocation. Majority of the relocation is alongside Road forty seven. But there are some replacement that we need to do on the side roads to loop back the gas replacement. So again, like we were under the impression that the, what we have covers both the end up and the city phase of it. That being said, totally understand the permitting requirements. We here, you know, to kind of see what's needed. If you guys have any questions, what, what's going on? What, you know, with the relocation that we're doing, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you guys have. And the work, so again, Zero Forty, Forty Seven, it also includes some work on Ninth Street, Georgia Street, and a little bit on Seventh Street.
So did you have road closures at, at this time?
We did while transferring some pipe. Yeah, we had to shut some of the intersection for the safety. You know, so it was for, for a short period of time. That's right.
Do you, do you not normally contact the local police or street departments that you're closing roads?
Yes, we do. We do.
So were we notified that roads were being closed? So we're not being notified when you're closing our roads either? I mean, that's, is that protocol? To let us know you're closing our roads?
We do, yeah.
The two in charge just said you didn't.
No, I, yeah, I mean, we typically.
Did you not notify us that you're closing?
At that time, we did not. That's, that's correct.
So why not? I mean, obviously you didn't, you had a misunderstanding on the permits, but there isn't a misunderstanding or notifying or our people. So I'm trying to figure out why you didn't notify us.
Don't have excuse. That, that would be.
So you don't have an excuse really on permits then? I mean. Okay. Any questions?
The complaints. Were that, was it, were they complaining for damage to property or for commutes that rose or the issues raised?
The complaints I received on Friday was for the diversion of traffic. People were needing to, they were going down the streets, having to turn around and come back. As we talked about on Monday, my major concern is the way they had the roads blocked. If a fire truck would have gotten down to the, and there was heavy equipment actually blocking the road. So there was no way for a fire truck to get through. Potentially, they would have had to back up. My guess is that's what happened to the citizen complaint. They got stuck in someplace. The exact complaint was they had to do a U-turn, come back down Main Street. So that's, that's the.
So no damage?
No, no name and no damage to anybody's vehicle. They were just upset because they didn't know the road was closed.
Yeah, if you can understand, this is an extremely inconveniencing project in the town. There are many complaints, so we try to look so it's, it's just gonna get worse since this continues. So we need to do everything really right. So to drop the ball. Really has. As I think you can understand.
Understood, yeah.
But to that point, Mr. Kirby, I think this is not the first incident, instance that Mr. Kirby's had to deal with Center Point and their contractors disrupting or cutting into our roadways. So hopefully denies a course direction of our operations. As I'm speaking of your risk, I draw your attention to one of your titles and your ordinances. That he was more aware of, so you're, you are positioned to issue a fine of not less than one hundred dollars for only five hundred. So if you can contemplate that. Or disapproval, they'll commit. Exactly. Maybe in ten year.
How much more work do you have to do on forty seven? Weeks, months?
Yeah, I mean, we probably did another couple of months to complete the project. We still have a lot of services that we need to relocate and but mainly we need to get on the side roads, which sure, you know.
After, up till the first year anyway, there'll be.
Maybe for then and that, yeah, yeah.
Looking at your documentation here for your proposed cuts, this includes substantial cuts to Ninth Street, to Seventh Street, to Georgia Street. Is that correct? What's the phase plan for this? I don't see that as called out. Is this going to be simultaneous request for closures or is this going to be phased?
I believe I'll, I'll let Miller Pipeline, you know, talk about that, but I believe the closures will be pretty limited. Everything will be bored in. So we'll try to bore the majority of the main. The main closures will be for, if we have to, will be one time or twice for forty-five minutes max to an hour. So it's not going to be a major road of closures as far as I know.
So you don't anticipate significant road cut? You want to close for equipment transfer?
That's right.
Not at this time. Well, I just, I think with the, the conversation that was had, my personal opinion, I'm only one of seven up here. I don't foresee pushing to implement any fines. I think a miscommunication, but you, you gotta take our side on this too. We, we need to know about road closure, school buses, fire trucks, police. You know, citizens are gonna be mad no matter what to some degree, and I get that. It's an inconvenience, but it's about the safety and that's the huge thing. If, if you guys are not communicating, in my opinion, again, I'm only one. If you're not communicating with Chief Stern, Chief Nielsen, or Director Kirby, then I will definitely say next time, in my opinion, five hundred dollar fine. For every instance, but it, it's easy. Just, just communicate. We're easy to work with.
As far as for Miller Pipeline and for being a contractor for Center Point Energy, I apologize for any inconvenience. That is not our goal. We are not here to inconvenience anybody. We're here to try to get, get through a job. State Road forty seven, no excuse, is very busy. We try to do our best to make sure we maintain safety, not only for our guys, but for the, the public as well. So going forward, I apologize for the misunderstanding and for the non-communication that we had on our part. We'll do better than that for the next time for not only you guys, but the safety of the public as well.
You know, like Scott and I said in our meeting last week, this, this isn't to inconvenience you or disrupt any, anything. This is just kind of formality because when, from our dealings in the past, you know, three years ago, and I know we talked about that, you folks weren't any part of that. But, you know, again, it's, it's all about public safety and just kind of awareness. Everybody knows what's going on.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Appreciate you guys coming. We need to make a motion on this just for. I'll make a motion. We accept the encroachment permit application for Center Point Energy to continue their work for the forty seven project.
Motion second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you for coming. I would stick around because there's a section in our meeting called public comment, and I think that man right there wants you to hear something. I don't. I think it's all. Next item up is a twenty twenty six Sherco snow removal contract.
I'll, I'll pick a shot at it. Scott, he's got a problem too. So Sherco reached out to offer a renewal contract, but they actually offered two versions, one just for a year, but also a three-year contract at the same price that you pay this year for each of twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. The only difference is this year's contract had four quarterly payments. They requested two semi-annual payments in January and of contract sum of three fifteen seventy. So other than that, it appeared to be identical to their prior work.
Mr. Shirley and I met this morning. He's here to answer any questions if you have it. It's virtually identical to twenty fives. He did offer a three-year option for zero percent increase for over the, the course of those three years. So if you have any questions, Andy's here, or I'll certainly try to answer them.
I have a question for Mr. Higgins. We need to move your tables up closer to the podium. Put them on the side. And, and maybe Scott, you could have answered this, but the way that, that money rolls in, are January, June good months, or should we look at since they're negotiated to change the?
We can work with January and June.
Okay. That was my concern. Okay. Sorry to make you wait.
That's okay. Yeah, that, that should not be a problem.
Discussion?
I've noticed the option here is for fifteen inches of snow removal. It's my understanding that that's been the previous amount, and then there's an additional billing per inch over fifteen inches. With Hamilton County historically receiving an average of twenty-two inches of snow. I would be interested to see how that works out monetarily, but it's fifteen inches. How it typically looked at this?
I think it's fifteen inches per inch.
I think it's fifteen, fifteen inch total for the calendar year.
That, that particular unit measure was really supported by Storm Day of Sherco and their partner agency. I don't, I'm not a neurologist. I don't know whether those competing data sets come from, I don't know. Andy, what was our total for the last year? January through the end of the, it's right around fourteen.
And, and the, the previous year, I think during the contract negotiations with Sherco, we had an option for like a twenty-one, twenty-two, and the council opted for the fifteen, roll the dice to see if we end up.
That, that's correct. This mirrors what council decided to do last time.
Because he did have.
There were, there were other options available. Council decided that this was the option that they chose for twenty-five.
And I believe we did get a refund.
We, the contract runs all the way through December thirty-first, so if we get an inch of snow, we're still on that contract.
This might help too to answer to any point. I think the increase per inch ended up being about the same as if we were to buy the total anyways. There was no material difference between the two.
Just thank you. That was a follow-up question.
Any further discussion?
I, I think with the cost of equipment, the way that it is on the rise in the acquisition time, you know, even if we order more of our own equipment. Acquisition time, you know, even if we order more of our own equipment to do this, I don't think we can. Do it for this ourselves in-house personally. You know, each, each truck we just purchased for last year was a hundred and sixty-five thousand apiece, pretty much fully outfitted.
Took us almost twelve months to get.
Yeah, I mean, took us almost a year to get them.
And after, after seeing. What they actually do. Last year would have been a gamble, in my opinion, for three years, but seeing them in action, I'm fully in favor of doing.
I, I got a sum total of five complaints for last year.
And, and the complaints that were, were given, we talked to Andy about it, and I mean, he was jolly on the spot of fixing them. Um, you know, fixing an issue. He, you know, he's. Community member. And. I'm, I'm for the three-year contract.
Also receive comments that goes. Outside of your condition of quality snow removal. Compared to other areas. Yeah, I agree with all of your comments as well, but three years is also a long time for a business contract. I don't know if you have any kind of performance guarantees or easy backups and arrangements that they were to. Interim, yeah, determining performance, you're certainly for other reasons. Um, and you are going to adopt a. Change the three-year term and authorizing, uh, director to execute project.
Well, if there's a motion to be presented, do so.
I'll make a motion that we accept a three-year, uh, commitment agreement with Sherco. Uh, for snow and ice removals for the rural area. And give Director Kirby, uh, signing permission to. Execute said documents.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Approval of agent of record for employee benefits.
Yeah, uh, right now McGowan, uh, agency. The short agent for, uh, probably Calley Insurance. They also have a, uh. A medical health insurance division. Mr. John Williams here in Chamber. Uh, would boost himself. They've been working, obviously together with the book. Uh, and. As we sit here tonight, uh, your patient of record is. That leave, uh, good relationship with the hour that already exists, this one hands that, uh, that relationship was relates to. Health insurance, bill insurance, and I believe the life insurance above.
Correct.
For George, Mr. Woody.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, counsel. Uh, my name is John Williams. Um, I have been a benefit consultant with McGowan for, uh, about four years now. Prior to that, I had a ten-year stint as a executive at United Healthcare. Uh, so I've had quite a bit of experience on, uh, working from a carrier's perspective. Um, doing plan designs and, uh, really trying to evaluate the healthcare dollar. Uh, I could spend hours here, but I'm sure there's other people that need to talk. Um. Prior to that though, I was an agent for ten years. I had my own agency, sold to a big national outfit. Um, really didn't like the big national outfit. That's where I went to United Healthcare. Um. Really to, my original intent was to burn up a non-compete and then go work at a different agency, but life happens and, uh, I ended up. Spending a little bit longer at United Healthcare than I anticipated, but I did learn a lot there. Um, now. I've done a very high level evaluation of the employee benefits, uh, for the town of Sheridan. And, uh, when I first come in. My goal is not to just blow things up and to. Push a product in front to try to earn someone's business. Uh, I come in, I really do an evaluation, find out where I can improve upon. Um, number one, the carriers, or maybe how the benefits are administered. And, uh, working with Liz, um, you know, we really uncovered that where the benefits are today as far as the health insurance carrier. The dental insurance carrier, um. They're the best fit, and, and I'm not here to try to say it's not. But where my experience comes in really relies on meeting with employees to really educate them on how to utilize healthcare a little bit more effectively. Healthcare is a runaway train, and my goal is to try to slow it down by educating members that, um. Just handing your insurance card and just not really caring, uh, how much something costs is not the right attitude to have. Um, you know, it's one of those things where people think, ah, I'm just letting, sticking it to the insurance company, let them pay it. But what they need to realize is that, uh, employees need to know that, you know. Their actions actually will affect overall costs of the town of Sheridan. So. Educating people that, um, the insurance company is like a funnel. It brings money in in premium and pays it out in claims. How do we reduce some of those costs? And it's having that member be a little bit more engaged in their healthcare spending. Uh, some of the biggest areas that people can do this right now is through, uh, taking advantage of, uh, manufacturer coupons and patient assistance programs. For prescriptions. Um, this is one of the biggest areas of medical inflation right now is the pharmaceutical industry. Uh, there's all these great new medications that are coming to market, uh, but these brand-new medications have a high price tag on them. Average cost is about four thousand dollars for a medication per month. Uh, we see them in excess of thirty thousand dollars a month. And, um, this is a very big way to flip someone's healthcare spending and loss ratios upside down. Now, these are life-changing medications, and if people need to take them, they need to take them. But with manufactured coupons, people can use, uh, sites like GoodRx to do some research. And they can go direct to the manufacturer, get coupons, and lower the cost of these medications. Here's an example. Um. Wegovy is a GLP-one medication that is used to treat diabetes, sleep apnea, weight loss. Uh, average cost is about eleven hundred dollars a month for this medication. Uh, just recently Costco, uh, announced that they will sell this medication for five dollars per, or sorry, five hundred dollars per month. Lowering it in half. Educating employees on where they can go to get best value for their prescriptions. Is gonna go a long way with controlling healthcare costs within the employees of the town of Sheridan. That is an area that I see as a major. Way that we can impact, number one, employees' out-of-pocket costs for prescriptions. If we can lower their out-of-pocket costs, that's more money in their paychecks every month. But then again, we also want to make sure we control the loss ratio of, uh, the health insurance policy for the town of Sheridan. So that we're not seeing large health insurance increases every year. And so that is something that I participate in, and I sit down with employees. To really make sure that they know once again how to utilize their healthcare to get the biggest bang out of their buck. Now. I also like to open it up for spouses, uh, cause sometimes it's the spouse that really does do a lot of the healthcare decision within a family. And, you know, a lot of times we come and sit down with the employees. But you've got to think, okay, sometimes there's that better half that's actually controlling the healthcare. Um. That's where we want to make sure that they open it up where a spouse may have questions, and they can tap into an advocate like myself to really. Uh, understand the healthcare system and get the best value for their, um, families. Um, by, if we were to name myself and McGowan as the agent of record on your, um, employee benefit policies. It would have no effect on your premiums. It would not change any of your benefits. It would just be, uh, myself as your advocate between the town of Sheridan, the employees, and the insurance carriers versus the NFP relationship today.
Thank you, Joe.
Any, any questions for this gentleman? Soon, no, I appreciate the, the explanation.
Yep, thank you guys.
Your motion to authorize a council to ban to execute the change, or change of.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we. Set the agent of record request, uh, to identify John Williams. And. Give Counselor President, President Devaney the, um, authority to execute the documents.
Thank you.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Sure. I, I look forward to hopefully what you might be able to do for us.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, the last item that I have on new, new business is the amendment to the twenty twenty-five salary ordinance. It's, uh, changing the job title from building inspector to senior manager of inspection. Um, I assume.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a total, uh, dollar change. It just. It has to be that, uh, labeled as such that John offered these rights, so the person can then pay to that people down.
Okay. Formality. Okay. Any, any questions on this? You go. Motion.
I'll make a motion. We, uh. Accept amendment twenty twenty-five salary ordinance with the change in the job title from building inspector to senior manager of inspections.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Mr., any other new business? Mr. Higgins, are you good? Finance report? Everything good?
Everything's good.
Attorney report?
Just, you know, some of the things we've been, uh, in, when circulated instruction agreements were both. Playground in the, uh, the street apartment building. We haven't, haven't had any. Scoot, they agreed to skip that yet, but everybody acknowledges that they haven't. Uh, and a guy has been brought on board after, like, the inspections on a fifteen thousand dollar contract. But they are working now with the chief on, uh. The, uh, feasibility study for an employer, uh, station. Uh, we worked with Jen to put together an employment agreement for the position that you just authorized. I think that was executed, right? Jen, uh, pursuant to the directions that you all gave. Uh, about, uh, benefits. Years, that type of thing. So, uh, my partner, Joe Pettigrove, does want to work with your, uh, committee, with your group. That is gonna be working on the, uh, handbook. And organize a time to sit down with that group and, uh, and walk through, but just focus then where you all want to go, so.
We have established a group.
Okay, if you would let me know who that is, I'll get.
Todd will let you.
Okay. Okay. Um. You've done some preliminary diligence on the five-acre, uh. Vacant property on West, uh, Fifth and Sixth Street. And, uh, I've got the phase one back on that. It's my understanding, and I look at Todd and Jennifer on it. That we're gonna have the community development. Uh, commission make, uh, that purchase, the Sheridan CDC. And so we're, that was kind of put together, it appears to have been put together in somewhat of a rush. Uh, three, four years ago, so we're cleaning that up with bona fide, verbi documents. And we'll, uh, organize a meeting of that group as the real estate transaction. Transpires at that point happen. Uh. We did, uh, Mr. Nice to get out of notice on your heavy vehicle, uh, ordinance. I don't know where that stands with the signage.
I do not, I don't either. Uh, they're like, the notice has gone out. Can't start enforcing until it signs up.
Signs are over, I understand. They arrived in my office, uh, the pre afternoon on Monday morning, so we. Our litigators continued work with the Cal even matter, and I'll update the president on that, uh, separately. Sherco contract, we just got that taken care of. And bring the grievance transaction home. The remonstrance state runs on that. Thursday, and then we'll start working with, uh, Todd, Jim, and grieving folks on closing that transaction, funding that bond issue. Uh, part on the to-do list is the parking ordinance, uh. Suppose we're gonna look at that, get back to us. Liz did send us a, kind of summary of her thoughts on what, what some of the parking. Uh, signage was, chief, I think you were gonna list some things too, so you get us that info, we'll, uh. We'll get you in order for the future. I think, uh, Main Street wanted. Main Street, you want to go prior on the parking ordinance? As it's currently posted, it's two hour length, uh, four, so. On that note, I think what spawned this was, uh, redevelopment commission. Uh, we'll have a formal plan, construction plan for the parking lot, Fifth and Jordan Street. Bill issue R and P, uh, and take, take the question proposals. Uh, have it ready to go for construction, also the, the, the brakes. The brake part, excuse me. So I think that also was triggered by, might have some parking disputes going on right now with our town's own parking lot and vendors and. Building business owners, so, uh, one thing leads to another, and if Main Street group could. Really offers an insight to help the council, that'd be great. And, uh, just one last thing, uh, local officials, there's department directors and, uh, invitation on December eleventh. Four thirty to eight, uh, our first gonna have a fine Christmas morning. Uh, overlooked circle all lit up, so it's nice to be, uh, which part of the other.
Okay, thank you.
So you got that.
You have anything, sir?
No, it's.
Okay, um.
Still, I bring something up.
Yes, we are good to the order, so yes.
I think that in lieu of what Endot's telling us, they're planning on starting construction next year. At the West End. I think we need to get our ducks in line and get our. Entrances to our park. At least know what we're gonna do. Because when they do the roundabout, we're gonna be down one entrance. Then if you close another one for construction, you're only gonna have one way in and one way out, so. And my recommendation was, we've, we've got some funding. At least get the one on forty-seven. So we know what, what we want to do and get it done. So we don't have everything all bollocked up.
Okay. Any other counselors have anything for good of the order? Um. I know that salary ordinance is a hot topic, and I'd like a couple. Members to maybe join me in a discussion, or maybe we do a full-blown work session. To discuss potential raises, bring in Mr. Higgins. If anybody can think of a date, start emailing what dates, uh, would imagine. The first meeting in December will decide what we're doing at that point.
Uh, you could have a public work session, uh. At five o'clock that evening, two things, second, and then take action that night. Then you're, you're ready for me.
I want to do before then, because it may take longer than an hour.
Okay.
So just start bouncing some emails around, maybe look at the last week of November. That way, if we have to do. Maybe the second to last week, the week of the seventeenth. That way, we're not getting into Thanksgiving. Um. Also, uh, Ron and I spoke earlier today about another, um, town hall meeting at Beacon Lodge. And potentially looking at. The third or the tenth of December. Again, I'll, I'll go to that, looking for a couple council members that wanna to go and, and do that. Um. That's all I've got for right now. We can. Move on to. I just lost it. Um, public comment.
Hello, Heidi King-Holtz, Vice President of Park Board. I just wanted to, uh, make a comment on the bottom of your agenda. It says Park Board TBD for November. We are actually, um, we usually meet, um, the Wednesday. It would be following the Wednesday directly before, um, Thanksgiving, so we're bumping back to the nineteenth. Our, um, our December meeting, uh, well, we do have business to attend to on our, um. On our November meeting, so we are bumping back just one week to the nineteenth, holding it at the regular time. And then our, uh, December meeting is a TBD, depending on whether or not we have business to conduct, so just wanted to. And then our December meeting is a TBD, depending on whether or not we have business to conduct, so just wanted to clarify.
I knew there was some.
Yep. No, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Ganzel. Okay, first I have a comment, and then I have a couple things. I just want to say that I think this board and Sheridan Town Council is doing a great job. Even though when I was harassing the county, they told me that we were going to go bankrupt in the first year, and we would have to go down the tubes. And obviously, you see, we're not going bankrupt, and we're not going down the tubes. So that was one of my positive comments. The other thing is, you talked tonight about closing roads with notification. I don't think you've ever gotten notification, have you, when Dunbar Road's been closed? Three times in the last few months. One time, I got up one morning, and I was taking a left out of my driveway at 226 in Dunbar, and it was completely blocked off. I couldn't go right, because that's where the blockage was. You couldn't get out that way. I was go left, and the whole road's blocked off, and they're never notified. I'm never, nobody on the road's ever notified. They, and most of the time, it's from the water district issues. So they block the road. There's no way. So I pull up, you can't get out, so I just went out and I pitched the signs in the ditch as best I could to get out. It's ridiculous. We can't get in and out because of it. And they, do they ever notify you guys? I mean, you know.
They don't notify the school either.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'm sure they don't notify the buses either. So anyway, so that's a big issue, and it's almost always the water district, so just FYI. Also, I have a question about, there's a still, at, at 230, or at Dunbar and 38, is that Sheridan or Westfield?
Westfield.
Okay, well, the semis there have hit the guardrail, and it sticks out pretty far, so I guess, I don't know who the, yeah.
That's the, that's Endot.
Okay, Endot, okay, because, okay. All right, thank you. I also appreciate the fact that you guys came out, that they came out and fixed, we had, we have craters in our road, huge craters, and they, they were patched, but they came out and actually really fixed them, so we don't have huge craters from all those semis fixing 226. I do appreciate that. That's the main things. I have, do have one question. Has the county ever had decided anything, or have they made any decisions about any even whispers about Dunbar Road yet? About having any meetings?
We have not heard any.
Okay, I just, I just want to stay on top of it, because my neighbors asked me.
Well, contact them, and ask them as well.
Well, I do, but I get no answers. I get nothing back.
The same answer we do.
Because I know I, we have one representative, but I know, you know. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see you smiling for a change.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for allowing me to stand up here for a minute. My name is Tracy Powell. First of all, a couple observations. First of all, kudos to this community for having so many people show up to these meetings. I'm a commissioner in Tipton County, Indiana, and in a commissioner meeting, and even as the town meetings, we're lucky to have two or three people, so it's good you're involved, and everybody's pretty much smiling. It's even better. Second of all, just so you all know, I'm not with Centerpoint or Miller. You guys can take that. And it's great to have such an active Main Street with that presentation. That was very impressive for a, for a community your size. Like I said before, my name is Tracy Powell. At my age, we're pretty much known by our kids, so my son, Brian Powell, actually played it down here at Sheridan, basketball back in, graduated in 2013. The community basically opened up their arms to him and treated him just like he was one of their own from kindergarten, so I really had a big affection for this community ever since. I am here just to let you know who I am. I am running for State Senate District 21, which is your area. I grew up on a pig farm in Miami County, Indiana. I went to a chiropractic school, so I'm a chiropractor in Tipton. My wife and I own a laundromat. We have three boys. I'm an IC Indiana County Commissioner, Executive Board Member, so I'm, I spend a lot of time down at the State House. And so my goal is to basically represent local governments in cities, towns, townships, and counties. Because as we see with Senate Bill One, it just went through, experience in the local government is very important before you pass some major major bill like that, so. If you want to know anything more about me, powforindiana.com is our website. Talks about our stance on public schools. I'm a big, I've met with Dr. Mundy. I meet with all the schools in our region, because schools were hit really hard with SCA One. So trying to see if I get in there, what we can do to help the schools out, to make sure 90% of our students are educated by the public schools, and we need to be able to support them. So, if there were any questions, I am a Tipton County Commissioner. My telephone, my cellphone is on to our website in Tipton County. I answer it seven days a week, as long as I'm not with patients or in church. Other than that, I answer the calls to, because that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to represent the people, so. And the government should start with, like this, people up, not the state down. I think we're getting pressed too much from the state down, so.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. It's very interesting to see what all you guys are doing. It's, it's awesome to see small communities move this well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Vance? Remember, you're talking to us, Vance.
I know that some people think I'm a pain in the ass. But also, I'm very concerned about this community. I want to comment on American Water's contractors and Miller Pipeline. When you ask them a question, they give you an answer. I don't know anything about it. I'd like to know. They've been very courteous on 47. I do not know anything about your contracts through the rest of the town. But I do know what happened the other day with these people. There are cones in 47 and Georgia Street. There is a white safety man standing there. And we got some idiot turns on the Georgia Street when the guy says no. And they got the road cutting through down there. They got a pipeline across it. It's their or not, their fault. When you got someone telling someone they can't go down the road, and they almost knocked the guy down, that's not Miller Pipeline's fault. And maybe they don't have a contract, and they're going to get that straightened out. But they have been very courteous, and the DRA's on 47. If we get this thing started next year, I'll be surprised. Because we have got a problem. And that is Fiber Optic Corporation putting that cable in the ground. They have cut my alley in two. I asked the guy, asked him, why did you put a tin can next to a pole on the north side of 47 that's got to come out? We can do whatever we want to, was his answer. It's four feet from the edge of the road. That is in the easement. That's got to be vacated. They cut my tree down. They moved right poles. And you wet fiber optic, put a tin can four feet from the road? That's wrong. You go on the south side of 47, they have put those tombs in the ground under four feet from the edge of the road. This fiber optic company needs to be stopped. I watched Miller Pipeline the other day vacuum from Georgia Street, almost to Adams Street, to put in a pipe. And the foreman told me, the reason they had to vacuum instead of dig or push was fiber optic. They pushed it through, and there was no way they could dig, so they had to vacuum the whole stupid thing with that vac truck. That's costing them money. We need to stop this fiber optic until they get their pipelines in the ground. And I'm serious. These fiber optic don't care about anything. They digging yards, they digging alleys, and they are cutting streets. Do they have a permit? I don't think they do.
They do.
They do. They do. Then someone better be overseeing it. Because I've got a tin can that's got to be moved, and the kid said, I don't give a damn. We put it where we want to. That's wrong. You understand what I'm saying? And I got one other thing. Couple months ago, we had a study that you authorized on this roads in Adams Township signage and stuff. After that meeting, I asked the guy about a sign on Jerkwater. He said that it's supposed to be replaced. They have not been replaced. I don't know what the holdup is on getting these COVID markers put back on the ground or replacing signs that's bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Vance.
And I'm a little bit pissed.
Little bit?
Yes.
I assume that concludes public comment.
Take the best for last. So I have one more.
Yes. Yes, sir.
The other morning, I stopped down on 47 and drank coffee. And I looked up, and there goes a red car up the Monon Trail. Turned on it on 47, so I think if there's any money, funding, or anything left in the Monon Trail, it's possible we need to put ballards at 47 and the Monon Trail.
North of 47?
Yep, that's where they can.
There is no ballard there.
I thought there was supposed to be a ballard there.
We'll get a ballard there.
I think they need to go both ways, because I mean, if they're going to turn north, they can go south too. So they got up, they went as far as.
EMC?
No, they got up to Park, and there was a ballard there, and they turned around and went back out, but, I mean, it's like, wow, did you read this? Happens in Carmel, but that's the first time I'd seen it in Sheridan. Interesting.
Action to pay accounts payable.
I'll make a motion with pay the account payable vouchers.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion as second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Upcoming meetings. Town Council, November 18th. BZA, November 20th. APC, November 20th. Park Board was just announced, November 19th. And RDC, November 25th. Am I missing anything? We have a comp plans steering committee meeting tomorrow. That's just the committee members at 6:00 here. And I skipped over the statement by the council president, but I just wanted to thank the Main Street Group and the Monon Meets Main. That's a lot of heavy lifting in a short amount of time. And it takes time to, to get things happening, and I'm just very grateful that we have people that step up to do that, because we don't have the time or energy to focus on those things, so. That, that is a great relief off of us to have a group like that, so. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Motion, or all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?